And good evening and welcome to the August 28th meeting of the Murfreesboro City School Board. We're glad to have all of you that are here in attendance with us, and we're also glad to have those that are at home or other places watching us on live television. At this time, I'm going to ask you to stand as we have three young people, Torrance Duggar, a third grader at Hopgood Elementary, along with Miley Smith and Avery Swayze, both fifth grade students at Irma Segal, to lead us in our pledge followed then by our moment of silence. And now our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now our moment of silence. All right, members of the board, you have the agenda in front of you, you have were sent out over the weekend, I hope you've had an opportunity to look at it, and I'm sure you have. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as written?
Uh, so moved.
Thank you, Mr. King, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you to Mr. Settles, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Our first item under our communication tonight is a special event for us tonight, as we will induct four new members to our Board of Education. I would like to ask Roseanne Barton, Amanda Moore, David LaRoche, and Becky Goff, if you will please come to the podium along with Honorable Mayor Shane McFarland, who will do the induction.
All right, it's my pleasure to be here. Good to see everyone, thank y'all for the service that y'all do for our city. I want to specifically say to Phil King, we appreciate what you've done over the last four years, how you've helped usher along with the school board the growth that we've had in this community, and also seeing a new school break ground over the past month. So I know we're all excited about that. I also thank y'all for what you've willing to do, for putting yourself out there, going through a campaign and helping make Murfreesboro the place it is. I'm going to read the entire paragraph, and then y'all are all going to recite it back at once, so we're going to find out who really can memorize when I... I'm going to read a paragraph for you, and then we'll read three or four words if you'll repeat after me. Before entering upon duties of this office, every member of the Murfreesboro City School Board shall qualify as such member by taking and subscribing and filing with the city recorder the following oath, if you'll repeat after me. I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear
that I will support the Constitution
that I will support the Constitution
of the State of Tennessee
of the State of Tennessee
and of the United States
and of the United States
in the acts
in the acts
constituting the charter
constituting the charter
of the city of Murfreesboro
of the city of Murfreesboro
and that I will faithfully
and that I will faithfully
zealously
zealously
and impartially discharge
and impartially discharge
the duties of a member
the duties of a member
the Murfreesboro City School Board
the Murfreesboro City School Board
of the city of Murfreesboro
of the city of Murfreesboro
without fear or favor
without fear or favor
and for the public welfare
and for the public welfare.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Mayor, we appreciate you being here. Our congratulations to our four new board members, and we are glad that you will be with us beginning in September. I would remind you that five minutes ago, you were a person in the community. Now you are a school board member, but what you say is taken a little bit stronger at heart perhaps, so just be careful, we all have to be. Thank you, we are glad to have you with us. All right, other communications, Dr. Gilbert?
Yes, I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Tucker for a moment.
Good evening, I'd like to make a quick introduction, and that is to introduce the new Assistant City Attorney, who will be representing the school board in Murfreesboro City Schools starting September 4th. I'd like to introduce Elizabeth Taylor. She is currently General Counsel for the State Board of Education. Prior to...she's originally Hales from Massachusetts, but she has lived in Tennessee for several years now. She went to Fisk University and graduated from the University of Memphis Law School. She worked for, or clerked for, a judge on the Court of Criminal Appeals here in Tennessee for a few years, then worked in the Attorney General's Office, and before joining the State Board of Education, she was an attorney with the Office of Civil Rights and Department of Education. We're very happy to have her joining us, and she will be starting officially next Tuesday, September 4th.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker, we're glad to have you with us, ma'am, and we look forward to our longevity of time and being able to work together for the betterment of the students and the school system of Murfreesboro, Tennessee. Thank you very much, we appreciate you. I do want to recognize Vice Mayor Madeline Scales, who's with us tonight, we're glad to have you amongst us. Thank you. All right, other communications. Ms. Trail?
Yes, sir, I want to ask Ms. Teresa Dotson to come to the podium with me. Teresa is the Coordinator of Reading and Intervention, and she's got a special recognition tonight for our great program that we had going on during the summer. Thank you. Good evening, board. I wanted to make a special recognition, you know, we started our Books on a Bus, or BOB, this summer, and we had almost 3,100 children participate this year. And so we had a special bus driver who really made that happen. We came up with a schedule as a district with some volunteers, and this bus driver said, hmm, I think there's a lot of places we're not hitting, and so she took it upon herself to go into other neighborhoods, to ESP sites, talk to the MTSU directors of preschools. So she really went above and beyond what we had expected as a bus driver for BOB, so we really wanted to recognize her tonight, so I'm going to call Ms. Teresa up here, and this is Teresa Crouch. I swear if you cry. And I want to... And so, what this says is you make a difference, and she really has made a difference for so many kids in the summer who may not have access to books. She made sure they had access to those books. But this says presented to Teresa Crouch for leadership in the Books on a Bus program, Summer 2018 in August season. So we wanted to present this to you, so thank you for all you did.
Thank you, thank you guys so much.
You want to say something?
I want to see this program grow and grow and grow, I really do. Thank you, thank you.
And I wanted to say, we have Ms. Ava Jordan here from Transportation, also was very instrumental in our scheduling, Gary Anderson made sure BOB got his new outfit, looks great, and also Suzanne St. John's here as well, and she was a, or is a academic coach at Bradley, and worked tirelessly this summer with the bus. So I wanted to thank, there's so many people we could thank, and it was just a great success, so thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
All right, continuing on, Mitchell Nielsen School would like to thank George Weeks and Remax Realty for the generous donation towards the drone racing team, and the pastor and congregation of First Baptist Church on Castle Street for extending a warm invitation to the staff and teachers to join them in their services on August 12th. The church took this opportunity to pray over our schools, they also made a nice donation of very much needed uniforms and supplies, so thank you to that church for all that they did for Mitchell Nielsen. Also, Case and Lane would like to thank Hands-on Science Center in Telahoma for purchasing the Lego Robotic Club Challenge Set, and for paying for registration fees for their, the Case and Lane Robotik, Lego Robotic Team. Also, Case and Lane would like to thank Ashton Smith of Caldwell Banker, and Blake Pro with Liberty Mutual for providing the back-to-school breakfast for the faculty and staff, and Loza Murfreesboro for their donation of products to help build a color cycle recycling bin. So those are my announcements, but I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Gary Anderson, we have a special Farm to School presentation, and I wanted him to give a little introduction of that program.
Thank you, good evening, board. This evening, we're going to hear about a program that Murfreesboro City Schools has embraced and has really, no pun intended, grown tremendously, and has been recognized by the state of Tennessee. It is the Farm to School Program. Darla Sampson is the coordinator and director of our Coordinated School Health Program. Autumn De Priest is her assistant, and we have another very special person that the kids just absolutely adore, am I going to make her blush a little bit? Absolutely adore, Victoria Einiker, she is our farmer educator, and she's the one who goes out and works closely with all the students in the Farm to School Program. This dovetails with our school nutrition program, so we're actually combining two different programs together to make a very beneficial program for our students. So I'd like to introduce you to, Ms. Darla Sampson, Director of Coordinated School Health.
Thank you, good evening, board. Thank you for this opportunity to tell you about one of Coordinated School Health's most popular programs, Farm to School. In Coordinated School Health, our main goal is to decrease body mass index, or BMI, in students. BMI is a measure of body fat based on height and weight. One of the ways that we hope to achieve this is with Farm to School. Four years ago, Sandy Shealy started the program through our Nutrition Department, and today, we serve over 3,000 students. Victoria worked with about 3,000 students in Farm to School last year. She started it with a nutrition grant with USDA. This past school year, Farm, I'm sorry, Farm to School is currently paid for under a grant contract with the state of Tennessee. This is last year that the grant will be funded, and we'll be seeking other funding. In front of you is a green folder, and the inside pocket has some of our printed materials, and the center has a grouping of pictures that will be on the screen, so as I'm talking, you can follow along. Two main goals that we have are growing food with students and getting that food into the cafeteria. We have garden beds, greenhouses, and hydroponic towers throughout the district. We plant a variety of crops timed with the seasons, and these crops grow and are harvested, and then given to the cafeteria for students to eat. This is Irma Segal's fifth grade students harvesting their bell peppers last week. The plants are gorgeous, so are the kids, just look at those smiles, and do the smiles not say it all? The students help to get our farmer educator, they help our farmer educator in the whole process. Here we have students looking carefully for peppers to harvest. They are super excited to pose for some pictures with what they found. Check out the pretty greenhouse behind them, where the new plants can be started when it cools off outside. Farm to School helps them learn as it relates to academic standards. Farm to School inspires teachers and gives them tools that they can use. Here, students are using a scale to measure the weight and document. Classes document what is happening with their plants in a science journal. Here, they are listing the weight in pounds using LBS for an abbreviation. The students deliver their harvest to the cafeteria staff. Just look at those peppers! Adding the color variety was fun, and most students had no idea that there was any such thing as a purple pepper.
And I didn't either.
This is Ms. Rita Jones cutting the peppers in strips for last Friday's lunch. Our cafeteria staff is so amazing in this process. I think it would be a lot of work to cut all those peppers, but Discovery did exactly the same process with the peppers a week ago in their cafeteria. And our plan was to give you a pepper tonight, but between what the kids ate, and we need to save what is left in the garden to enter the state fair next week. So that crops can be rotated, the different grades have a different focus. Just a few examples, kindergarten grows and samples salad ingredients. Second graders grow and harvest and eat potatoes. We have first and third graders growing pumpkins right now, and this slide shows the first grade green pea competition. It begins with our farmer educator reading the book, First Peas to Table, with the kids, and the peas are planted with the children, and then as they grow, the students measure and journal the growth. This first picture shows them harvesting the peas. I think the garden bed is pretty wild-looking, and it's one of many that are around the district. In the middle, he's holding up a fat pea pod, and then to the right, they are shelling the peas. Each class weighs the peas, and the one who has the most weight wins. Each class gets to eat the peas after their weight, that's the fun part. They love trying those. This is Ms. Kales winning class for the district from Discovery School. They were so excited during their assembly, and loved their first-place ribbons that they got to take home. MTSU Farm graciously hosts our third graders in the spring for Farm Day field trip. These pictures are from last year's trip of our farmer educator giving them a tour of the hoop house. The bee lady is explaining honey and bees and their role in food, and they're allowed to see and pet animals, including the dairy cows that make the delicious chocolate milk that they get to sample. Third grade also has a special curriculum because it pairs so well with the standards, and it's sent to the teachers developed by our Instruction Department. Here, we have a hydroponic tower, which is started in seed from rock wool, and this is pretty cool because students can see the plants grown indoors without the use of any soil. Here's a nice harvest from the tower at Northfield. This is the greenhouse at Overall Creek with broccoli plants last spring. This is some lettuce greens and herbs that were brought to the cafeteria. They were used in salads, and basil was added to the tomato soup. The tomato soup served with the grilled cheese is my third grader's personal favorite, that's her favorite cafeteria meal. And here are some beautiful salads. When the children spend weeks or months growing their food, they feel proud and connected to it, and this is key in trying new dishes with an open mind. Murfreesboro City Schools, like Mr. Anderson mentioned earlier, is leading the way with our Farm to School Program, and the state uses us as an example and a role model for the program. Sadly, the state of Tennessee currently ranks number one in childhood obesity, and I would like to mention that MCS, Murfreesboro City Schools, was awarded with a certificate of achievement from the Tennessee Department of Education for having a decrease in their BMI based on three-year trend measures. This is, I think, interesting because Farm to School started, Chef Academy, and our breakfast program started four years ago. At this time, I would like to introduce to you our farmer educator, Victoria Einiker. I got to do the talking, but she does all the working, and she's also known Farmer Victoria. She's the face of Farm to School, and she's the one working with our students and schools on a daily basis. This is her fourth year working, working with us, and you can see her hands get dirty, she washed them, but she does work really hard, and she is so enthusiastic about Farm to School. Her passion and positivity is contagious. It's with teachers and students get really excited after they talk to Farmer Victoria. We want to thank you for all your hard work that you do in making Farm to School a success.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Board members, have any questions, comments, Mr. Ballard?
Thank you so much for what you're doing there. How are we doing as far as the greenhouses at each campus? Are we, are we moving toward that, or are we, have we arrived there?
We are growing, right now, we have a total of six greenhouses that were paid for with the grants. They're at Discovery, Overall Creek, Irma Segal, Reeves Rogers, Case and Lane, and now John Pitterd was added this past year. Mitchell Nielsen Elementary's permit is waiting, and then we'll have one more to be paid for under this grant, and then we can seek other ways to get the other schools on board.
That's great, well, I think you should invite the board to spinach day at the next day at the cafeteria, then when you get on, get the spinach harvest in.
Right, absolutely.
That's a joke.
Makes good Kales movies, that's what you really want, or her Kales movies.
You put it out there, Will.
Yeah, we got to eat the spinach.
Mr. King, you have a comment, question?
I do, I'm very impressed with this whole program, and to kind of put this in perspective about how forward-thinking and progressive this system is, and not to be funny, but if you go to Walt Disney World in Orlando, in Epcot, one attraction is solely how Disney World grows their own food for service in their restaurants, and they're using the hydroponics, like you just mentioned, they use the very same thing to grow their spinach and salad and fruit that they use in their restaurants. So they're doing it for commercially viable reasons, as well as the farm-to-table, if you will, but we're doing the same thing, and people would consider Disney as a very progressive, forward-thinking company, and here we are. I also got to think that there are colleges, ag schools, if you will, that teach, you know, farming, and one of their biggest challenges is giving the growing population is how to grow the same amount of food on the same amount of land for more people, and this, forgive the pun, plants a seed for some of these children of what they might want to do down the road. I think it's fantastic.
Very good, yes, sir. Other questions, comments, Mr. Settles?
Thank you, I am so thoroughly impressed, and I wish I could grow stuff. Whoever came up with this, with the seeds in the handle and the...
Our very own Communications Department, it was developed in-house
This is beautiful.
by Lisa Trail and Tori Carr.
Not surprised.
These guys, whoever does all this stuff is really, really super-duper smart, I know that's a technical term, but it just means you're smart. And my question has to do with, now when I was in school some years ago, elementary, we didn't have a lot of fresh vegetables, and because we, I guess because we wouldn't eat them, but have you found that the kids are more interested in eating these vegetables when they grow them?
Oh yeah, absolutely. These students, when we have the pea competition, and I introduce to the first graders the idea about peas, they're like, no, they don't want any, ew, and then by the end of like the third month, we're out there measuring every two weeks, and they're just so excited, and they're just so much more willing, and then by the end of it, you wouldn't guess that 90% didn't want to like try some peas.
Wow.
And during the summertime is like our busiest time, so thanks to like the Case and School Program, one of the most difficult things that school systems tend to have is who's going to take care of it over the summer. And so I'm able to provide enrichment classes, and we've made beet smoothies, we've our beet popsicles, carrot popsicles, and that's what these students were eating over the summer. And it's really fantastic, because I've been able to get with Sandy Shealy, and what we want to do in October for Farm to School Month is get these students into the cafeteria and seeing how their salads are made.
Yeah.
What a lot of people don't realize is that Sandy orders everything fresh, so everything that you see right in front of you, when it comes down to these salads, they're sliced, there's a reason why they have eight people in the cafeteria
Okay, I like that.
to provide and make these delicious salads.
Beautiful, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, ladies, very much, it's wonderful. Now, are we looking at perhaps another grant in order to get the greenhouses at the other schools?
We do have one idea.
Yeah.
With USDA, we hope.
Yeah.
Okay.
But we currently have eight greenhouses, and that includes Hopgood, so I feel, I mean, these greenhouses are producing food that go in the cafeteria, eight out of 12, which is pretty impressive.
And we can do a lot with beds and towers as well
Sure.
so, for places where they may not have an appropriate spot for a greenhouse.
Thank you, thank you very much for your report, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else on the communication? All right, board, I have a motion to approve the consent items. These were policies that we talked about last week and passed on first reading.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard, have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Settles. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none, thank you. Action items.
Mr. Ingstad?
As we talked on August 14th, you approved the workers' comp going to the Tennessee Risk Management Trust. Tonight, we would like to recommend that the Murfreesboro City School System liability, property, the liability and casualty insurance will also go to the Tennessee Risk Management Trust. If you look on the third page of this, the annual cost will be $275,000 in premium, and it's basically the same coverage that we're getting right now. And we'd like to recommend approval of this.
Just point of clarification, approval would, approval would need to be subject to the city attorney's review of the contract, which I believe will probably be in order, but I just received it today, so...
That was for the workers' comp, I mean, that's for both, but that's...
Oh, well, I've, I received a different version of it today, so I need to review that, but we'll make it available in the coming days for signature by the board chair and, and the director of schools.
You received what today?
There, the, the intergovernmental cooperative agreement that will need to be signed, so the board, if the board chooses to approve this, going with the Tennessee Risk Management Trust for, for liability insurance, the approvable, the approval would simply be subject to the, the legal review of the contract itself and the terms of it.
Okay, so...
So is that the kind of motion you need?
That, that would be the motion, yes.
Okay, so...
Wait, wait, wait a minute, let's be recognized. I don't understand what you got today, is that different to what we're looking at now?
No, there is an actual intergovernmental agreement. This is the...
Basically talks about how the Tennessee Risk Management Trust operates, the trustees, it's the overall picture of whatever insurance the school system have, and they cover 102 school systems now. It just talks about the trustees of the organization.
It's not, it's not, the legal department, and it's my opinion, we approve of the proposal, and it's, we join Human Resources Director and the Director of Schools in supporting going with the Tennessee Risk Management Trust. The motion would simply be to approve pursuing this insurance coverage, subject to the legal department's review of the terms and conditions of the trust agreement.
Okay, I got you, I understand, all right. Now, have we have other questions? Mr. King?
Just an observation, really not a question, if I'm right, to reference what you're referencing on page three, says property casualty premium is $275,344, but the adjusted premium, beginning September 1st of this year, going on the way to July 1st of next year, is $228,536. Correct. I went back to the minutes from last board meeting, and looked at the policy that was included then, and if I'm right, that was $285,902.
That was the workers' comp policy then, that's what you approved that night.
I noticed it was $57,366 less, and I thought, hey, this is good, this is in the right direction, but that, is that's a different policy?
We saved $200,000 on our workers' comp premium, and
Okay.
the budget, what we had in the budget for this insurance was $361,000.
Okay, okay, all right, all right.
Around...
I got it now, thank you for the clarification. Thank you for the clarification.
Okay. Other questions? All right, we need a motion then to approve with the understanding that will be approved if the legal department finds no problems with it. Am I, that's what you're saying, Mr. Ringstaff?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do I have a motion for that?
I'll move.
Thank you, Ms. Rehneer. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Settles. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you.
Okay. The next item on your agenda is the approval of the ESP advisory board members. Each year at this time, we ask that you approve two parents from each school, one or two parents, and then they're going to meet probably quarterly to oversee the ESP advisory board. So I recommend approval of this list in front of you.
Mr. Ringstaff, how are these members selected?
Basically, we get the site directors at each school to ask for volunteers and...
Okay. Mr. Ballard?
What are some of the things that the advisory board will review and recommend? Or what is, how does that machine work?
This is a tool that we are able to meet with the parents, representatives of the parents at each school, to explain to them where ESP is going, what we're doing currently, what we've done in the past, where we're going in the future, what we're seeing, and also to get their feedback, get their opinions on what their children are enjoying about ESP, what do they see that we need to change or improve in.
Okay, thank you.
Any other question?
I just was gonna ask, where do they meet, at central office?
Yes, sir.
Mr. King?
What's the length of service? Is it just the one school year?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And how often do they meet?
Quarterly, once every three months, probably three times a year.
Okay. All right, do I have a motion to approve the ESP advisory board members?
Moved to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. King. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you.
Thank you.
First reading of board policy, board policy 6.309, zero tolerance offenses.
Mr. Tuck?
Yes. The last board meeting, you've voted to have the legal department go back and review the zero tolerance offenses policy. Several of you voiced questions or concerns, and I went back and looked at it, reviewed it, and one of the form that had been presented was based on a TSBA policy. Upon reviewing it, I realized that there were some things in that policy that really didn't belong in a zero tolerance offense policy. There was a provision that preceded the zero tolerance offense of firearms that dealt just with weapons generally. And the zero tolerance offense law that's been adopted by the General Assembly in Tennessee does not speak of weapons generally. It speaks of firearms. So the possession of fire, or the possession of weapons other than firearms is addressed in other policies. And so in speaking with Dr. Gilbert about, what, did we want this to be a zero tolerance offense policy, or did we want it to be a weapons policy? And we decided that it should be a zero tolerance offense policy because there is a specific statute in Tennessee that, one, creates zero tolerance offenses, and then there's a second statute that requires school districts to have a zero tolerance offense policy. In reviewing the policies, there is adequate disciplinary procedures in place for addressing situations where a student brings a weapon other than a firearm onto school property. And Dr. Gilbert and I agree that that's the appropriate place for that to be handled. So what you see here at the beginning is identifying the four, the four zero tolerance of, zero tolerance offenses, which are possession of firearms, possession of drugs, assault on an employee or a school safety and education officer, electronic threats. And then it goes through to determination and notification of a zero tolerance offense, and then the appeal process. The one thing that on further review, I realized, and it's my recommendation that would take out of the policy, is, starts on line 43 and running through 45, is that's the placement in alternative school. There is a provision in the law that deals with, if a student is expelled for a zero tolerance offense, the director of schools may assign that student to an alternative school. But since Murfreesboro City Schools does not have an alternative school, and alternative schools are only available for students beginning in the sixth grade, that's, the inclusion of that, those three lines is probably not appropriate for the school district, and so would be my recommendation that if you vote to, or move to approve this policy, that you do so with deleting those three lines, 43 through 45. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
I have a couple.
Sure.
Line 33, the review on appeal by either the disciplinary hearing authority or the school board. Who is the disciplinary hearing authority?
That is a committee that is made up of personnel. You would have, for example, you'd have a principal, you'd have a central office staff. So that's spelled out in another policy.
Okay, okay, all right. And can you give me an example when the board would get involved instead of the hearing authority?
It's a two-stage review, and that's spelled out in the appeals process as well. In the policy that governs the disciplinary hearing authority, there is the possibility for a further review on appeal by the school board of a decision by the disciplinary hearing authority.
Okay.
And that is, and as Dr. Gilbert indicated, those procedures are set forth more fully in the disciplinary hearing authority policy.
Good. Thank you.
Sure.
All right, other questions? Ms. Rehneer?
Just a typo, I think, on line 48. This handbook's provided annually to all teachers, administrative staff, and should be parents instead of parent.
Yes.
Be plural, okay. Mr. Ballard?
Just want to ask Dr. Gilbert, do you agree with the removal of line 43 through 45?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Settles?
I believe that my question is on those same lines. I know we don't have alternative schools now, not that we would in the future, but the possibility is there. So if the lines were left in, would it weaken the policy at all? Or does it just open us up for something that we don't want? I guess is my question.
I think at this point, it's really irrelevant.
Irrelevant? So if we ever came up with an alternative school...
Then we'd be talking.
I've got a good name for one, if you want alternative school.
I could say that from a purely legal standpoint, if you had a situation with a sixth grader right now who committed a zero tolerance offense, and you, and Dr. Gilbert thought that the appropriate thing to do would be to have that child assigned to an alternative school, the law would allow that, and that could potentially be something that would be worked out with Rutherford County schools. But it's, it really does not, I think perhaps it would be misleading to have it included in the policy, that it would seem that it's a more likely alternative than it is in most cases for students in Murfreesboro City Schools.
And my other question was on the weapons part. I think you said it's addressed in another policy.
Yes, it is.
Do we have that referenced? Do we have, is that...
It, I believe it's, is it the code of conduct?
The code of conduct, there are a couple policies, and I didn't look those up, Mr. Settles, but there is one policy, for example, that explains different levels, and it gives a description, and then it just gives what possible ramifications would be held. There's also a zero tolerance policy, and I believe there is one other policy, but those are all gonna, so you're really specifying when you get into those policies. But the general overall policy is the one that has to do with discipline, that does have the different levels, and gives principals a pretty wide spance of choices as far as punishment.
I'd like to get a...
Yep.
Is that the policy that's referenced, 6.300, that code of conduct policy, is that what you're talking about?
No, it's actually, it's guide to intervention supports and alternatives to suspensions. It's STU 23, and this, the policy spells out different levels of misbehavior or prohibited conduct. And I think it's go up to four tiers. So level three, the higher, the higher the number, the more serious the offense. Level three deals with look-alike weapons, and then level four deals with possession, use, transfer of dangerous weapons. So that's, that is an example of a level four, and it's, level four offense is described as acts which result in violence to another's person or property, or which pose a threat to the safety of others in the school.
And we will be, those are some policies, that particular group of policies, the STUs, are policies that we'll be looking at over the next couple of months that you have not reviewed yet.
Okay. Mr. King?
Appreciate y'all segueing into my question and observation. Last meeting, I asked, should we add commits assault against students? And y'all said it was covered under another policy. And if we go to the cross-references, the policy suspension, expulsion, reprimand, 6.316, if you go to our website and read that one, that does list offenses against anybody attending the school. So yes, we are covered if someone attacks a fellow student. But when I went to try to find code of conduct 6.300 and drug-free schools 6.307, neither of the policies are listed on the website. I just didn't know if it's because, like you say, are these, we getting to these in the near future?
Right.
So, okay, all right.
Those are the TSBA numbering systems, and so they are...
We're going from the STU...
You're moving that direction, yes.
To the numbered system, so.
Yes.
But I was just looking for the cross-reference policies and didn't find them listed, whereas the, like the STU that you were mentioning is not listed as a cross-reference, but just an observation.
That will give you something to look forward to over the next couple of months, board. I know, you're excited about the policies.
I'm very excited. Thank you. Can't wait.
All right, any other discussion on zero tolerance offenses? Do I have a motion to approve the policy with the absence of, what, line 43, 44, 45?
That's correct.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I so moved.
Thank you, Mr. Settles. We have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. All right, reports and information?
First report is your budget comparison. We are at the one month, 8.3% of the year. This is for the month of July. Last year at this time, we were $980,000 to the, in the red. This year, we're $386,000. I try to caution people, don't get too excited or too nervous on the first few months because some things are front-end loaded when we purchase things, some things come later. Last year, we had more front-end loaded information, it was almost a half a million dollars more. So in the next month or two, we should be catching up with those type numbers. Overall, our revenue is up slightly from last year at this time by only 2/10 of a percent, and our expenditures are down 6/10 of a percent. But like I said, we front-end loaded stuff more last year than we have this year. So right now, we're fine where we are.
Okay. Any other, any question, discussion? All right, other business? I think it's this time, I'd like to take a minute to recognize two of our board members who are attending their last meeting with us tonight, Nancy Rehneer and Phil King. We also have Cogger Smith, who will not be back with us, but Cogger could not be with us tonight. I'd kind of like to have each one of you kind of sum up what's, you've been on the board, I'll let ladies go first, on the board, six years?
Six years.
Okay.
And I've seen lots of changes. We've built new schools, we've started new programs, farm-to-table, the third graders going to the dairy, building greenhouses. It's just been phenomenal what this school system has been able to do, and I credit, obviously, Dr. Gilbert. She's so good at making these connections with outside agencies and pulling things together. She sees something, we were at the TSBA conference in a session about a summer reading program with the books on the bus type, I wanted to sing a song. Wheels on the bus, go. Sorry.
Round and round.
And we were in that session, and within a month, she's already got it pulled together and ready to go, not having the bus completed at that time, but you know what I mean? The program was set, and she knew what was happening. The board, we have been able to work cohesively. I've enjoyed all the time that I've spent with you. I've been, you're gonna make me cry, I've enjoyed it all. And it's time for, to pass that baton to someone else, and I know the new board members are gonna do a great job.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. King?
I'll tell you this, I've had a good time. I've had fun. Trying not to get emotional either. There were times sitting here, and I wish I could remember the topic, and I'd be sitting here, and I'm thinking, dead gum, I wish the public could see what we're doing, because I mean, we were thinking and talking ideas and moving forward for the good of the kids and the good of the teachers. That was fun. We had seven people, different backgrounds, different life experiences, and nobody told us this, but it happened organically, what's best for the kids and what's best for the teachers. And other than that, we figured the rest out as we went along, so to speak. And if it wasn't good for the students or the teachers, we just didn't do it. We made sure we had the best around us, and we do. When you get out in other places and you go visit and hear other people talk about their schools, and you realize, dead gum, we really aren't that good. We are so far ahead of the curve here. You know, when I first got elected, I wanted to give the mayor and city council a club, if you will, to use as a recruitment tool. And I found out in the past four years, yeah, we have. They view us as the second strongest thing, other than just the quality of life offered in Murfreesboro, as the second biggest recruiting tool. That's important. There are a lot of places in town, I mean, pardon me, in the state or the country that don't have that, and these kids are getting a quality education. Gosh, my kids have been out for eight years, 10 years, and the kids now are learning things that didn't exist 10 years ago. This farm-to-table didn't exist 10 years ago. I cannot wait to see what will be taught in schools 10 years from now. That's, that's, when I say fun, that's where it gets fun.
Well, I would like to say to both of you, to Nancy, I'll say to you first, it's been a pleasure serving on this board with you. You brought some ideas from the classroom, the library, within the schools, and at the same time, realize that there are a lot of things that go on that we have to kind of look at and weigh out and that sort of thing. But your expertise in that area has been phenomenal, and I think everybody here has recognized that, and we have appreciated that very much.
Thank you.
Phil King, you came to us from a basic business background. I never thought that a recruiter for UPS would know much about schools, but I'm gonna tell you what, you have, you have come a long way. You have brought us a lot of different ideas and insights and examples of things that you have seen in other places, and I think that's important to all of us as we go to our TSBA meetings, that we've seen things that are going on in other parts of the state, not just in Murfreesboro. And I think we recognize that. I appreciate both of you, what you have done for this board and the time that you have been here, and hope that you will continue to stay in contact with us and certainly give us ideas and insights and things that you may hear. And who knows, someday you may decide you want to come back and join this... And who knows, someday you may decide you want to come back and join this, this group again. We've, we have a very good board, and I'm sure we will continue to, but we work well together. Mr. Suddles, anything you'd like to say?
I would. I want to say thank you for helping us out. Nancy Rehneer is like a legend around these parts, anyway. She, we got to really know each other, we were at the, was that a?
That was the.
Criminal. Safety, yeah.
Yeah.
And we got to talk and converse and fellowship, and it was excellent. She's a lot even smarter than I already thought, but she doesn't lord it over anybody. So that was really good. And what can I say about Phil King? When I first got on the school board two years ago, Phil was one of the first people to reach out to me. He called me on the phone, and he talked to me and kind of calmed my nerves and helped me to feel like I could actually do this. And Phil has always been one that I can count on to find some research about something that we're talking about and make it make relevant sense. So I appreciate your work on the board, yours and Nancy's, just been invaluable. And we're gonna miss you. What can I say? It's gonna be a tough miss, but you have, I'll tell you this. You have left a, a tough, tough record, both of you, to come behind. So the school board members that are coming on, you got some big shoes to fill. That's all I got to say about it.
Thank you, that's very sweet.
Mr. Ballard?
I'd just like to say, I could echo almost everything verbatim to what has been said. But I, when I arrived, I thought, you know, I'm coming here and I'll have colleagues. And now I've got friends because we, we work together so well. This board impresses me every day with, or every meeting, every time we talk about. And in life, everything's about teamwork, and this, this board has operated in that way with teamwork. So I know that you guys are gonna continue to go out in the community and have a great, make a great impression and changes as you move along your life path. But as Chairman Campbell said, you know, think about it in two years, see how you feel later. And it's been a pleasure.
Thank you.
Dr. Gilbert?
I'd like to thank you on behalf of all the employees and the children of Murfreesboro City Schools. When you think about what you've accomplished and what you've supported, you're responsible for the children having breakfast and lunch every day. You're responsible for the book bus. You're responsible for, if you think about all the programs that have been instituted. Most of all, I want to thank you for your advocacy with the legislature because we are certainly under their, their rule. And you haven't been afraid to speak up, and I really appreciate that. But thank you for advocating for this school district, and I appreciate the fact that you will continue to advocate for this school district. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
And as a small token of our appreciation for each of you, from other, our other board members and everybody involved.
You're so sweet, thank you.
We present this to you, and thank you very much for.
Thank you.
What you have done, and hope you will continue to do.
You guys always make me cry. Thank you so much.
Thank you all.
Well, thank you. I think the thanks, we owe you more thanks probably than what you owe to us. I really believe.
Well, I just want to say one more thing. Don't like go to Australia and stay.
She's there.
I know.
They got there, they left here Mon, well, left LA Monday evening and arrived in Australia, in Sydney at, I think, five o'clock in the morning on Wednesday. You skip a whole day when you go. And Kate, her husband, had business meetings, and they weren't where they were. So he was away, she was in the hotel three days by herself. She went to a wildlife preserve, played with a koala and a wallaby and all these things. So she's, she's just, you know, the sun, the moon, the stars. And then they left there and went to Perth. And she sent a picture of their little part-time apartment that the company's paying for until their belongings get there. And she sent a picture of looking out their window. She said, now, I'm not saying anything about the flights of stairs I have to take. But she took a picture from their window, and it was just the beautiful sea and the ocean, whatever, and just a little few rooftops. And she said, it's, we're really closer than the picture looks. And I thought, tough life. But I sure miss her, but we FaceTimed, and so I feel better that I can see her and hear her voice.
Good.
Very good, good. One, one other thing, Dr. Gilbert or Mr. Anderson, you want to tell us a little bit something about our pictures that we have before we adjourn on our new school, which is?
Sure. And you had asked for a report, periodic report on where we are, so I put together this little report for you. The first three pages are from the architect that shows the layout of the floor plan and what the building will look like from the road. The next one are the actual, our drone, I had our drone fly over the site and take the pictures of where we are right now. What you see is where the building pad has been prepared, getting ready for the concrete and the blocks to go up. Geothermal wells are being drilled this week is when they're starting on them. And just, I gave you the view from all different angles of the property. If you look on, let's see, the first, second, third, look at the fourth picture of the drone activity. And you'll see in the right top dead center of the picture in the green, that's our little lake on that property. We own that lake. I'm gonna call it today Lake Linda. And the Gilbert Garden, that may change later.
Just wait till you see what we do with it.
Dr. Gilbert will, will take care of that.
All kinds of ideas.
The next sheet is the sheet of where we are in the project. If there's a little star in the second column that shows, we're done with that. We are, at the time that this was done, we were one week ahead of schedule. Going through the city has been absolutely wonderful in helping us get things through, helping us get the project going. And so we're better than we thought we would be by one week. Now, that can change with weather and stuff, but that's where we are. Construction-wise, the contractor is on-site. We are holding two meetings a month, and so we'll be having updates. I'll be able to have updates for you every month to tell you where we are. And we'll have our drone take you some more pictures as the construction goes up. And I believe, Ms. Trail, you have, is she here? She's gone. On the website, she has the thing that you can watch the process, the progress of this. I'm not sure what material she'll have, but basically, I'm probably gonna be giving her pictures like this to post to the public and see where we are as well.
Thank you, sir, very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am, you can.
I didn't say this before, but, you know, I talked about collaboration with other entities and groups. Mr. Shacklet, we need to thank city council. I've sat here for six years, and city council has always, always responded to our needs, been so easy to work with, and I know that that tradition will continue, so please thank them for me.
And me as well.
I was, I thought I needed to say something to them, so since you've made that comment, I think I need to make a comment too, on behalf of the council. You know, one of the, I've served, this is the second time I've served as liaison for the city council. And I have been, and I've told you this before, but I'm so impressed with the work of this, of our school board. The conscientious effort that you put forward to bring your experience, your wisdom to the decisions that are made, and how that collective finding consensus and moving forward on a, on a particular issue. You have worked so well with us, and particularly the ones that are leaving, Collier and Nancy and Phil. You have given not only your mind, but you've given your heart. And just as Dr. Gilbert has said several times, if we start with the children, if that starts every decision that we make, and you have done that. You have applied your love for children first to the decisions that you've made as a school board member. And Phil and I serve on another committee together, and we'll be, he'll be missed. And you will, both will be missed. But I know one thing about public service. Once that seed has been planted in your heart, and once that time you've offered yourself once to public service, you will always seek to find another way to flesh out that love for your community. And so to me, it's an exciting thing because as this door has closed, there will be another opportunity for you to find a way to serve and continue to serve because you are, you have a heart of a servant. And I'm confident that you will continue to serve our community and to bless others. If you, as you have served, surely been a blessing to us.
Thank you, that's sweet.
Thank you, sir. Well? Oh, we have any other business to come before our board tonight? Not to have a motion, I'm sorry, Mr. Ballard?
One last thing, I forgot to mention and take this opportunity. On September fifteenth, the City Schools Foundation is having the Back to School Dash. And that's a five K, ten K run. And so here's your opportunity to get ready to run ten K. It's only costs you thirty dollars. And all of those members in the community that we can draft and get into that, this is a major fundraiser for the, through the City Schools Foundation, and it goes right back to the classrooms and to the teachers. And it's a, it's a great fun time, and I plan to be out there handing out water.
I was gonna say, do you gotta run?
But I encourage you to join in any way and. Oh, it's a walk also, if you.
No, I was gonna say, I hope you can walk.
You're so inclined to walk. But that's, I just want to push that forward forever.
Now, what if I volunteer to be out there to hand out water when you run by?
We should have a relay, I think. Hand me the water.
Every ten feet. All right, we have anything else to come before our board tonight? If not, do I have a motion for us to adjourn?
Mr. Chairman, a move, we adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. King. In a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Rehneer. All in favor?
Aye.
Good night. New board members, could I meet with you up here for just a minute, please?